They are mom's treats. They eat plenty of fruit. A pepper is not a treat. They eat more than pepper. They eat sweets, shorty, mangoes. They get those on dessert. They like that.
When's that when you grow up?
It's different.
I have some pieces of corn on my parents' house. My mom has had a pantry full of candy. They'll make this one out of. You want a piece of candy? No, I didn't care. No. Look at her like an insane character.
Like our animal would be like their shoulder brand or whose problem. Can I take a licorice with my coffee?
Oh, licorice does.
Oh, no, that's what I think. But sometimes when they deliver food by alcohol, the man who lives in Eric's thing, I approve every day. So when they take his meal, sometimes once a while we give him a licorice treat or something like that. And she always goes, can I trade the licorice with your coffee? Okay. They get stuff.
They love black.
Oh, they love black. My children love black.
Love black.
Yeah. So are you going to call in before the meeting starts? Are they going to hear the whole meeting?
We're ready to go to the executive session.
Um, does anybody have, because I can't do two at the same time. Does anybody have access to their email? You can tell me the dial-in number.
Do they have?
I need the dial-in number because I can't, I can't, I'm hosting it.
You can't host it?
I am hosting it, so I don't have the dial-in number.
You did.
I used to write with the. Okay, the dial-in number is three, four, six. Two, two, four, eight. Seven, seven, nine, nine.
I don't need a meeting number.
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID, followed by pound.
Four, six, four. Six, nine, six.
That's the open meeting, not the executive session, right?
Seven, five, one.
Six, nine, six, seven.
Five, one. This is our, our, our.
Did you have the exact one?
Enter your participant ID, followed by pound.
I know, we're fixing it.
Just press pound. You are in the meeting now. There are nine participants in the meeting. This meeting is being recorded. Court, you have been put on hold by the host. You cannot listen or talk until the host releases the hold.
Okay, we're live now. I need everyone to mute.
Their, their visitor ID.
Okay, everyone, everyone, their devices and we'll. All right.
There we are.
Yes. Yes, this is.
Okay, okay. We're going to do things. We're going to call. At this 11 o'clock. So those will start first of all.
I'm going to leave. That's sexy. Here's your help. Stand. One nation.
Yeah, yeah. You have a car. This is a six. Four, five, six.
Okay, I think.
Have you had?
No, I haven't had anything.
Okay. I was like, you're, you're, are you muted?
Yeah, yeah, somebody's got their phone next to something. It's a speaker. So that's what's happening.
Okay, so we're going to have fun about here at Town Hall. I've got here a thing not muted, half muted. We're, we're. We're advised to wait for each other. We're getting fun back here. Okay, um, next thing up on the agenda is the public hearing. Public thing is scheduled about an opportunity to comment on the proposed comprehensive plan. So, um, we opened the public hearing. Let me, uh, spend a minute here. Uh, I just want to, uh, go over a couple of things. First is, um, the process. So this public hearing, we're going to have three public hearings. Or you can think of it as one public hearing that we're going to open three times. So we're going to have this public hearing tonight. We're also going to have a public hearing at our next council meeting on April 9th. We're also going to continue the public hearing on our next meeting after that, which is April 23rd. So the April 23rd meeting is where we will have the ability for the council to actually take action. So you have maybe one month. And, uh, uh, uh. Any questions? Yeah. You may, you may, you or anyone in the council. Uh, ask any of us any questions over the course of the next month. So that's the process. When we're going to operate the, uh, public hearing is Linda has a list of everyone who has, uh, joined the call. And Linda will go through them in sequence. So she'll call out a phone number. And at that point, if you want to speak, you can speak up. Linda will ask you your name. And then you'll have anywhere from three to five minutes for you to speak, make your comments, et cetera. Then we're going to go on to the next person. So we're going to run through the list. If. What, what?
Public hearing. We're going to do the same.
No, no, this is just. So, so what we're, so what we're going to do here is we're talking about this zoning right now. Um, so we're going to go through the list. Again, if something comes up and you have further questions, uh, to do this again in two weeks and we'll do it again in two weeks after that. We're going to run one time best, best, and then we're going to move on. Again, if you have any questions, you can, you can, if you can, ask any of us. Okay. Uh, last thing I will say, uh, with regards to your public comments, I want to make this clear. I've tried to make it clear in the mayor's letter. And based on the fact that the citizens didn't give a D. Biggest concern, I, I, maybe four or five. Relates to the school. And the school is not, uh, in our purpose, not. School district is on the control schools. They get to place a school any place, anywhere, anytime they want. They're the independent school district. And they get to do whatever they want to meet their mission. So if you don't like the location of the school, there's nothing we can do about it. That is not a Lakewood Village thing. Okay, this is not in play. Now, the other issue that's come up has been a lot of concern about parking or traffic. Well, that's true. There will be more cars with a school than we currently have with the woods. That's true. But when it comes to parking, when the school is built at some point in the future, they're going to be required to stack the cars on their own property. That's why they have 15 acres of land. So there is no street parking near the school. That, that will not happen. So if your concern is about they're going to be blocking the streets or whatever, that can't happen. And that's something the school district will put in their design itself. So again, that's not part of this particular process. This is about, uh, Sam Hill venture reallocating the land and the parks and the streets and the new entrance. It's about that layout that incorporates a school. Okay, so it's about the layout. The school itself, when the time comes and the school is going to be built, at that point, we'll open up those discussions with the school district that time. So I hope that kind of clarifies that. Uh, feel free to, to ask questions and, and make your comments. So what we're going to do is Linda, if you're ready, you can start going down the list and the public hearing is now open.
What I'm going to do is call you by your, the last four numbers of your phone number. If you have a comment, please indicate. Or if you don't have a comment, remain silent and we will move on. Four, 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 three. Do you have a comment?
Hey Linda, this is Dan Tantello. How are you?
Hi, Dan.
My only comment was just, you know, our same objection to the path behind our house. And, uh, still looking for them when they go out. Um, other than that, uh, that was my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay, last four numbers, three, six, six, one.
Hello, this is James Chandler. My, my comment is why aren't we, uh, moving this, this process out because of this coronavirus stuff? It's hard for me to hear everything and, uh, feel a little depressed here.
It, uh, I think I understand what you're saying. Could I ask everyone, when you're speaking, please speak up. Give me your name and give me your address. The first speaker was Dan Tantello. I've got his address on Kerry Lane. And I'm sorry, the second speaker?
This is James Chandler.
Okay, yes, sir. Okay. And what was your comment?
Uh, let's know why we're not moving this whole proceeding out because of this coronavirus thing. I'm having trouble hearing and understanding what's going on because of the technology we're using here.
I think what we're trying to do is this process is one where we're a small town, we're trying to keep things moving forward. That's why we're doing, road construction is still underway. Uh, we're doing our improvements to our water lines and expansions. And if people have comments, we're, in a normal situation, there's one public hearing on the night of the, of the voting and then the council votes on that night. That's the way that it works in every city. We're spreading this out over six weeks. It's in two mayor's letters. There's three public hearings. Every city council member lives within a thousand feet, pretty much of everyone in this town. There's a council member. I don't see any reason why anyone can't, if they want to convey some sort of concern or opinion, seems like you ought to be able to do it. I think we've got enough built into the system that allows us to keep moving forward. That, that's my opinion.
Yeah, I know, I've just been, I've just been having it for, I don't know how many years. I've only looked at it for seven years, so. Uh, this has been going on for more than that when they have been trying to do this. So I don't know why we're trying to depress this into this, you know, six week time period here during the coronavirus outbreak is mainly concerned here. Uh, pushing us off after this could probably be, it would make me vote against. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next speaker, zero, eight, four, one. Did you have any comments? All right. Zero, uh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, I did. Linda, this is Joni Lee Han at 750 Kerry Lane.
Okay, good.
I want, just also mention that, um, we are also in opposition of the, um, the pathway that's going to be, um, behind the properties on Kerry Lane and/or Melody.
Okay. And phone number is six, zero, eight, eight. Did you have any comments?
Yes, uh, this is Eva Bravo. I live at 300 Hillside Drive. And, uh, I just have a, a few questions. Um, first of all, um, am I understanding this correctly? That, um, no matter what, Little Elm ISD is going to be putting a school in here at some point in time, whether it be, uh, sooner rather than later it will be going in? Or is that something that we can eventually vote down?
Okay, the Little Elm ISD, they've owned land for the school. They originally owned the triangle out front for almost 20 years. Uh, there's no school there, obviously. So they're now flipping it with land plan. That's the swap. So now they'll own land which is closer to where you see it, closer to the middle. So they're going to own that land now. They own land to put in a school. When that school will happen, we have no say in that. Um, they, they buy land for schools with the intent to put a school on it. But they did that 20 years ago, too. And there's no school there now. Uh, if they decide to move ahead and put a school on their property, there's absolutely no vote. There's nothing Lakewood Village does. There's nothing, the citizen, you can't vote on it. There's, there, there's no, it's their land and they get to decide what they do with their land. So there is no procedural thing to happen down the road. If they decide in, in, you know, five years from now that that's a good time to have a school, then they get to put in a school.
Okay, that was, that, that.
Go ahead.
That answered a question. I'm sorry, that, that answered a question as far as when would the school be going in? It's, it's not a definite date as of yet.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
So what, what, what the school district tries to do is they try and get way ahead on land because they don't want to wait till all the development is kind of surrounding it. Then they got to pay a premium price. So they always try and get kind of way out ahead of where they think they're going to need schools. That way they can get it, you know, more affordable, right?
Mm-hmm.
So that's kind of what this is.
Okay, and I also noticed this is exhibit C. Is there an exhibit A and/or B that we can look at? Or has those been both voted down?
Uh, I don't know what you're.
Uh, on the picture, on the plan that you sent out to us, it says exhibit C concept plan. So I was just wondering if there was an exhibit A or an exhibit B concept plan as well.
Oh, 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 okay, I'm sorry. Okay. So, no, in the, in the zoning request that land plan is, or Sam Hill is submitting, there are different exhibits that are part of what they were, were working out. One of them was the survey and the legal descriptions. So they're still finalizing what those things are, but they're not. The, the main thing about this particular part is to get the information out about the layout. So that was the, the exhibit, uh, C, which is the land use, how the land's going to lay out. The parks, the streets. And that was kind of what that was.
Okay, and with this school going in and this, would the front of the school be at Lakewood Village Drive? Or is it going to be on High Ridge Drive? I just need to verify.
Um, you know, we don't know that yet. I, the only thing I've seen is about, uh, I, I, I want to say about a year ago, the land plan and the school district were deciding on the swap itself, the, how much land they needed. And what the school district did was they just plopped the school in to see how much land they'd need if they just dropped one in to kind of get the sizing right. But it, it did not have like the orientation or anything. So we'll be able to talk with them on the design of that. I, I really can't tell you which way. If I had to guess, the school would face Lakewood Village Drive. That's what I was guessing. But I don't know whether they would put it more toward the front or more toward the back or, we don't know that.
Okay. And then, uh, lastly, um, with this design, would that mean that Lake Crest no longer would go all the way through the way it does now?
That's right. Lake Crest, yes, Lake Crest right now, the land on both sides of Lake Crest is owned by the same landowner. And Lake Crest is an easement. It's not a road. It's actually an easement across somebody's land that the city got many, many, many years ago. So when this swap happens, that land is going to be reconnected into one. That easement is going to go away. So now, I believe the school district will probably on their land, complete the circle. But we at the city are not putting in that road. The landowner is removing the easement. So that's right. The through street will be Parkwood. That's the street that will go through.
Okay. All right, well, that, that answers all my questions at this point. Um, I will say I'm not, I'm not excited about having an elementary school right in front of my, my housing area, but I understand, uh, my hands are somewhat tied, but I will be voting on this and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I see, um, an identified, someone identified as Megan's iPhone. Did you have a comment?
Uh, yeah, I, I'm at 300 Hillside Drive also. We're, um, together participating in this meeting. And, uh, the only question I had, oh, I apologize. My name is Megan Bennett. The only question I had was where, where the back of the school is on High Ridge Drive? Is that, is there going to be a fence along there? Or is it just open land? Like, we're, the, behind the school, I apologize.
Yeah, I mean, we don't know this. So we don't know anything about the school design itself other than when they lay out the school and, and let's say that we're five years down the road and they want to break ground. We're going to be heavily involved in the design of the, um, landscaping and that nature. They, you know, we obviously can't tell them how to build classrooms or, or architectural things. But as the city, they're, they want to work together cooperatively with us. And they understand about our setting and where we are, that we're going to want heavily treed. We want to have a lot of, a lot of green space. Uh, in fact, one of the questions they asked me early on was, would the city allow the elementary school, and it's an elementary school, would we allow the elementary school to be two stories in order to reduce the amount of concrete and make the footprint be as small as possible? To have as much green space and trees as we could have? Not that that was a good idea. I thought that was a good way to think about us and our vision. That was, I thought, I thought that was, now, again, we don't know what that design's going to be, but I, I thought that was a positive that they're thinking about our wooded area and kind of, you know, our natural vision as to who we are. I thought that was a, that was a good point.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I appreciate you sharing that. Um, that's the only question I had. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. I think I've caught everyone. If I have not called on you and you have not already spoken and you want to say something, please let us know. Otherwise, we will move on.
Okay, next up then is, I know I'm doing reversal. There's a public hearing for citizen comment on the proposed comp plan. Does anybody have anything to add with the, uh, the comp plan? Okay, so.
I make a motion that we table this, uh, discussion until April 9th meeting.
Okay, so I have a motion to table the zoning public hearing for two weeks and we'll pick it up again, uh, with citizen comment in two weeks or April 9th meeting. That's the motion?
I'll second.
Eric Farage has the second. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. All right, so comp plan, there were no comments on that. So can we close the public hearing on the comp plan?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, Daryl has a motion to close the public hearing on the comp plan. Serena has the second. All those in favor?
Y'all can have to speak up. And if you're voting, can you say, do it properly?
Okay, so we have a unanimous vote to, uh, to close the, uh, public hearing on the comp plan. At, uh, 7:23. Okay. Uh, next up on the regular agenda, consideration of the resolution extending the disaster declaration, public health emergency due to COVID-19. So, um, everybody in the council, you've seen basically the declaration that I made, uh, basically following the lead, uh, the county as well as the state. There's nothing really unique to that other than, uh, the playground is closed. The park is open, playground is closed. That's consistent with all the other cities around us pretty much. But, yeah, yeah. But, um, anyway, that's basically it. The main item here is City Hall is closed. Uh, so we are, we are closed for business. But we're still operating. Roads are operating. Um, you know, we're still doing banking and paying the bills and proceeding along. So does anybody in the council have any questions about it? Right? So what we want to do is I think we have to, Linda, we extend it for.
Uh, the, the resolution is in front of you. It's been reviewed by the town attorney. And I believe it's those who are spending the mayor's declaration until the April 9th meeting. And you can, it could be a runoff. Is that what that says?
Uh, no, that doesn't really, they, they can't, uh, file.
I will, I, I send the document out. I believe it's continued until the April 9th meeting, um, where we can give an opportunity to reassess. But it gives the mayor freedom to implement any, um, actions necessary to comply with any governor's orders or, uh, county commissioner, uh, the county judge order.
Because the way the law works, I can only declare an emergency for seven days. So I have seven days. I have to get the council together, same with Commissioner's Court, everything. That's why he keeps making these proclamations, these disaster things, because they only last seven days. Unless you guys, then, then you either expires on some or you have to extend it. So I, the way I read this resolution here, it says that it's extended until sometime as the declaration of emergency is over. That's what, that's what it says. So, um, as, as you can imagine, we're just, you know, we're following exactly what the county's doing. So, anyway.
Okay, so I make a motion that we, uh, extend the disaster declaration and public health emergency, uh, due to COVID-19 until April 9th.
Well, so the, here's the resolution.
So did your motion, please, how the resolution?
The resolution says it extends until the emergency is over.
As amended by the town attorney.
Or you try, it's not amended by the town attorney. There's no amendment here.
So guidelines are just.
I know, but it doesn't, doesn't have anything to do with, I don't know where you keep seeing March 9th from. That.
So extend the resolution until the.
You're approving the resolution?
Just approve the resolution. All right, I've motioned to approve the resolution, emergency disaster resolution. Uh, Serena has the second. Okay, all those in favor? So that is unanimous. And, uh, very good. Thank you. We'll just keep getting on, moving on. All right, next up, we have the, uh, the budget review. And, uh, I'm only going to point out one or two things in the budget. The budget looks really good. We're way ahead of, uh, of where we, uh, thought we would be. So we're looking in really good shape. Um, expenses are down. Uh, revenues are right and tracking in line. Franchise fees are already ahead. So this is worth the halfway mark. So our franchise fees are expected to be $34,000. We're at the halfway mark and we're already at 36. So we're, we're way ahead on that. Sales tax is running 50% ahead of last year. So the sales taxes are doing very well. Um, you know, expenses are, are in line. Uh, some of those expenses for the, uh, for the city side are front loaded. So friends, we pay the, the audit fees and all of that are paid upfront. You know, like our propane costs, we're not going to have any more propane. We're not heating the building anymore. So it's, it's not exactly a true, you know, you don't double what we have because there's a lot of front loaded stuff. Um, but everything looks like it is, um, is, is looking really good. As you can see, in this particular thing here, uh, in the particular, uh, year to date, our operating surplus is sitting at about $227,000 that we are ahead right now over the, uh, over the budget. If you look down to the next line down below, non-operating, you see that the capital outweigh, we've, we've spent $262,000 on roads. So that's been the, the stuff we're going to talk about later. But that's, um, you know, that's where that money is coming from. We're running a big surplus, which we're plowing into the roads right now. That's why we're not hemorrhaging money because we're way ahead on the operating side. Um, everything else there looks fine. Uh, the second page, what I put in here was for the general fund. Uh, we have about, uh, we have an unusual, it's unusual for us. We have about eight houses which are delinquent. Usually it's about, uh, three about now. So we have several that are out there. So we're owed about $20,000 still to come, which, uh, penalties are accruing each month. So it is inevitable that we'll get the money. It's just a question of when. But this is an example of the money that, uh, that we're owed. So everybody can see. Um, last page. If you, if you, if you, uh, look at the utility fund, the utility fund is looking really good. Uh, the water, you can see last year we, uh, we had about 167. Well, we're at about $90,000 right now on water revenue and we're at the halfway mark. And we know the water revenue ramps up exponentially the next three months of the summer. It's going to really get high. So after six months, we are way ahead on the utility side. And you can see from the utilities here, our surplus on the utilities right now, before we've gotten to the summer, and our surplus is about $20,000 a month in the summer, the surplus. So we're already $94,000 ahead on the water and sewer so far after six months. So the water and sewer fund is doing extremely well. Uh, the, uh, a big chunk. Uh, the, uh, a big chunk of that cash right now is, uh, the 12-inch water line, you see outside the window. So we've got that 12-inch water line going in, uh, which is about the 70,000 of the 78, it's that water line. And we'll have two, three more fire hydrants going in as part of that project there. Part of the, that 78,000 will be recoverable, because we're oversizing that for land plan. So that'll be part of our negotiation with them to get credit for that. Okay? So that's kind of what's going on. Utility fund is looking outstanding. We're in great shape on the utility side. Okay? So that's about it. Anybody have any questions? Now, I can give you the individual lines to go into each of these if you want, if you wanna see individual lines. But you know, like, like, there's a zero on the playground, haven't spent a dime on the playground. Uh, the election was about 5,000, we canceled the election. So there are things that are embedded in the budget where, you know, we have very positive, uh, you know, variances. We're doing really well on the general fund side. Okay? Okay, last up, uh, on the regular agenda, we have a discussion of the road project. So, um, as everybody knows, we went off, we've, we've talked with Ed Bell. We postponed the pre-construction meeting, we were supposed to meet, uh, last week, to basically meet and then kick off the roads, we're due to kick off the first week of April, was the, the order to proceed. They've asked for a three-week delay due to weather. We said that's fine, I told them that was okay. Um, so now we're looking at a, basically like a May 1st start date. When, when we say start, that means that they get the order to proceed, which means they start mobilizing, so the equipment shows up, they start stockpiling the road, they, they basically start gearing up. And right now, they're, we're negotiating a land plan to let them do it over there, which, um, they just kinda wanna wait a little bit, three weeks for the weather to all dry out, and then they can mobilize. In the meantime, you've seen them in town, they're continuing to survey, they, they've been laying a lot of survey stakes. Uh, the, the road construction itself, the machines are all GPS-driven, they're automated. In the old part of town, when we did the roads, they were hand-driven, the guys were driving it down the road, the actual paving machine. This stuff is all computer-driven and automated, so they've gotta get the survey right. Today I saw them out, they were actually marking the driveway cuts. So they were marking individual driveways where they're gonna saw cut them for the, uh, for the road down there. We've got most of the mailboxes out, there's still, uh, we've heard from pretty much everybody in town at this point has given us approval to remove the mailboxes. Uh, we just have to get to it. So it looks like the roads are clear. We've got a slight postponement, like I said, there, but that's, that's okay. I mean, we, we wanna make sure when they show up that they get going. That's what we want. Financially, it doesn't hurt us if they delay slightly, because as long as we have the money in the bank, the slower the construction draws, the better it is for us, because...